And good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the October edition of County Fair, our news and information source here for all things Hamilton County. I'm very fortunate to have with me tonight Chris Monzel, Commissioner, of course, of Hamilton County. Chris, glad you could join us.
Thank you very much, Jason. Thanks for having me.
Love having you on because we always get a little bit of more information of what's going downtown in the whole Hamilton County. And we're going to talk about one of your favorite subjects. It's one that at least we know we can talk a good hour and a half hour on is, of course, is the sewer district and what's going on there because we're running on a timeline here.
Yes, absolutely.
And it's time to start making those decisions.
Right, exactly. And that's one thing I wanted to talk about tonight and to the viewers of just Convos background on the Metropolitan Sewer District, how we got to where we are today, and then what's the future is going to look like. Because you're right, we are facing some decisions that are going to have to be made here probably within the next year, a year and a half, that will affect all county ratepayers.
I think it's a good idea, as we normally do, go from the beginning to where we need to go. But just to give a quick overview, why is this so important? I mean, again, because the viewers probably aren't certain, and again, once we get into the history, I think it kind of flushes itself out.
Yeah, a few charts that I brought here will definitely bring up the issue of why it is so important to the viewers and to the county ratepayers is that monthly sewer bill that they're getting now. It's not a water bill anymore, it's a sewer bill, and just how much that has increased over the past few years and how much more that will increase. To me, it's something that, from a Hamilton County's perspective, could crush families and businesses if we don't address it and make sure that we're doing everything possible to keep those rates low. Because to me, people are going to choose to move their families, move their businesses to other counties if it's just too expensive to live here.
Well, and I think, again, and we'll get to a slide on that, which I think makes the big, was one of the bigger choices of what happened back in the early 50s.
Right, right.
Actually, the 60s, when everything changed. So, let's dive in.
Okay, super. Yeah, so first, the Hamilton County created a sewer district back in the 1920s. And so there's several sewer districts at the time. And then, you know, each different community, you know, Loveland had a sewer district, you know, the West Side, you know, within Coleraine Township, you know, all these various political subdivisions had their sewer systems that were being developed as population had increased. And so it was about in the 1950s that we came, 1955, actually, that we came and created the Hamilton County Sewer District Number One. And we couldn't do it, it was actually through the state legislature. So county government doesn't pass any laws or ordinances. That is done by the Ohio State Legislature. And so they are the ones that put into the Ohio Revised Code that there was a county sewer district, sewer district number one. And so that combined, you know, just the ones that we are working with within Hamilton County. Fast forward a few more years, another decade, in the 1960s, the city Cincinnati at that time was the largest population within Hamilton County. And they actually had the largest amount of infrastructure for sewer systems, you know, water treatment facilities. And so at that time, the leaders of the county and the city came together and said, hey, we're facing a lot of Environmental Protection Agency type of work that we have to do. The EPA was coming in and telling both the city and the county subdivisions, you've got to fix your sewer systems, they're outdated, you know, because some of these are almost half-century old or even older.
At that point, yeah, you're looking at...
I mean, some of the stuff in the city is still, they're like wood, like wooden kind of piping or tubing, so to speak, for the sewer systems. So, you know, you have some old stuff that's, you know, throughout the system. And EPA was like, you guys got to come in and you got to fix it. And so at that time, they decided, well, wouldn't it be better if we kind of all joined together to fix the problems and at the same time kind of simplify, you know, why does Loveland have to fix it, or Coleraine Township have to fix it, you know, let's do this all together. So, all 20 local sewer districts combined with the Cincinnati Sewer District and created the Metropolitan Sewer District in 1968.
And it seems like that would have been the right thing to do, again, making it one central body, everything, you don't have to worry about one or the other, people calling, who's going to take care of what? I mean, it just seems like logical sense at that point.
Right, absolutely. I mean, especially from a stance of that the city had the largest amount of population at that time, you know, they had the infrastructure set up for doing waste treatment and, you know, the sewer pipes, so to speak.
Sure.
And the county was just, you know, not as populated yet. From that standpoint, just kind of made a lot of sense of setting this up. And this agreement is a 50-year agreement. And it broke down into roles and responsibilities of what the county was responsible for and what the city was responsible for. And so out of that, the county is responsible for basically the financial aspects of running a system. So, we're the ones setting the budgets, the county's setting the rates, you know, that's...
Yeah, I was going to say...
Well, I'm jumping ahead a couple of slides.
You're jumping a little bit, but that's okay.
A little slide. So, but, you know, it basically breaks down into various responsibilities that are more financial on the county side, issuing debt, you know, making sure that, you know, we're, you know, balancing the budget at the end of the year, we have to have a balanced budget for the Metropolitan Sewer District. So, all those kind of financial aspects are on our side. We have to go through the expenses, look at what's being spent. But on the operational side, the city Cincinnati was the one that was put in charge of that.
Okay.
So it was a split, kind of governance was being done by the county, and then the operations was being done by the city. And again, from that standpoint, it made sense of, the city already had a majority of this stuff in place.
Right.
Right? They had the largest amount of, you know, folks working on it, plants in place.
They already knew how to make it work.
Exactly. So they are in the business of operating.
Right.
So why not team with them? And back then, you know, you hear shared services all the time. This is an example of shared services, where you're actually utilizing across different types of governmental bodies of providing a service to the public. And so it made a lot of sense to do, right? And from the population standpoint, from the, you know, type of capital that the city had, you know, it was just the right time to go in and combine together. And so with that, you know, the city's responsibility was just the day-to-day operation of the system, you know, making sure that the treatment plants are running, making sure that the pipes aren't falling apart, you know, getting rid of the wood, old wood pipes back then, you know, and just making sure as development expanded out in the county, that those sewers were being established, you know, for those new subdivisions that were occurring, you know, out in the Blue Ashes and, you know...
I was going to say, because now we're starting to get into the expansion, the urban sprawl, I guess you could say.
Right, right, absolutely. So over time, you know, the population of the city Cincinnati has decreased, but the population in Hamilton County has increased. So you've seen this cross go, so to speak, on a population curve. And over the past 30 years now, it's almost reversed. So before, it was the city that had two-thirds the population of the system, and the county one-third. Now that has been flipped. So the city is actually just one-third, it's about three, less than 300,000 people. And the county is over 500,000 people, 600,000 people. So you can see it's a different flip of now, the majority of the ratepayers or the users of the system are actually outside of Cincinnati, they're in the county. And so from that aspect, it's a different dynamic now of before, where the city was kind of the bulk of everything. Now it's been flipped and it's actually the county.
And so how does, of course, now looking at it, it doesn't seem apropos or right, you know, for the city to have it all, whereas, you know, maybe it's time to, would be able to look back and go, well, shouldn't the cities have that governance? But again, because we have this set in place, we already have rules, regulations, and the cogs in motion.
Right. Actually, there have been some folks that wanted to leave our system.
Wow.
You know, and then we, because of the 50-year agreement, and we actually went to court, the Supreme Court, and they said, no, you can't. This is an agreement that's in place, this for 50 years, but that expires in April 30th of 19, of 20, sorry, getting ahead of myself. It was signed back in April of 1968, but actually expires in April of 2018. And so that's just two years, a few months away.
Yeah, I was going to say, just a few months away, exactly.
Right. And so with that kind of looming ahead of us, we have a lot of decisions that we're going to have to make. And looking at where we came from, and basically the effects of that as well, of what we've built, I think the public needs to be aware of just where we need to go next in the future with this, because it is going to expire, one way or the other.
One way or the other.
It's going to end on April 30th of 2018.
And it's not one of those things that you're like, okay, well, expires, okay, we can walk away from it. There's so much already in place and with so much history as we've already gone through, that you cannot just, sorry.
Right, right, right.
You should have been thinking of that. No, it's not that, that's not how it was meant to be.
Right.
You know, there should be a rollover or something else going on, which is why you, as the county, were that governing body to look over this, to go to that next step.
Right, absolutely. And with that, I think we're trying to do, as we're doing tonight, educate the public.
Sure.
Educate all the various jurisdictions of what exactly is Metropolitan Sewer District now, you know, how big is it, how much is it costing? I mean, that's some of the information I wanted to kind of go through tonight.
Absolutely.
Of just explaining just how large this is. I mean, when you look at it on paper, MSD by itself could be the largest political jurisdiction in Hamilton County, greater than the city of Cincinnati, based on its budget and size and spending.
And that's, that's pretty amazing, considering all the other things that go into the county that...
Right, right. When you look at, you know, all the different aspects of county government and where we're at, MSD itself has over, almost 600 employees, it has 3,000 miles of sewer lanes, it has sewer lines, it has seven treatment plants, two package plants, 99 pump stations, over 200,000 accounts throughout the county, and its average capital spend is over $200,000 a year. So $200,000. To me, if you look at that number, that's basically building a new streetcar every year, or almost building a new Great American Ballpark where the Reds play, every year. I mean, every year, they're spending that much money in capital projects. And it just, it's mind-boggling.
And that's amazing to think. I mean, that's a lot of zeros.
It is, it is.
It'd be nice to see that on a check coming to me, not being written by me or anything.
Right, right.
But looking at these numbers, you know, you've got the, you know, 3,000 miles of sewer lines, and you've got seven treatment plants, is that enough?
Well, for what we're at right now, it is. But as development expands, as we're going into other areas of the counties, we're going to have to build more, right? I mean, so if they're putting a new, you know, subdivision in somewhere, you're going to new, need potentially new lines going in those areas. So, right now, you know, of course, we'd like to have more. People live in Hamilton County, so we love to have more subdivisions being built. But there aren't that many areas anymore.
Yeah.
As you look over the county, it's just a few spots here and there that you can actually put some of that development in. And there's redevelopment going on, which is good in some of our, you know, older communities. But yeah, we definitely will need more lines to continue development of Hamilton County.
And so, of course, as you're saying, we've looked at what's been going on, and as things go on, the budget is the biggest tackle.
Right, right, right. So the operating budget, I said the capital budget was over 200 million.
Right.
So is the operating budget. So the operating budget itself is over $200 million. Half of that goes to paying off the debt of the projects that we already done. So $100 million. So kind of taking it for a family's budget?
Yes.
That's your mortgage. So your mortgage is basically paying the debt on your house, because you go borrow money to buy your house.
Borrow money, right.
And so when you're looking at how much you're paying in your debt on your mortgage, that's similar to what we're doing here with these MSD projects. So we have to pay debt because we borrow money from banks to go build these, you know, new sewer lines, go repair the old ones we got, replace, you know, some of these issues that the EPA's come in and said we have to fix, which I can talk about in a little bit. And that by itself is costing us over $100 million a year in just loan payments, just paying off the debt, which is incredible.
And I know we've probably talked about this before, but in how, at what point will we, would we be able to pay off that debt? Because obviously, as debt increases, the interest rate occurs, where would be...
Years, years, years. And in fact, we do have a chart.
I was going to say, I believe there is the beautiful chart.
In the back, I called the mountain chart, which we'll get to in a second. But it's just, it's incredible when you look at it and just the, you know, how much money is going to be needed to pay off all these projects that we have to do per the EPA's consent decree, and the effects it's going to have on people's budgets. I mean, the one slide we're going to hear, the next slide, actually, we go through is the average, you know, looking at the average annual MSD bill. You know, people complain about property taxes all the time in Hamilton County. Oh my gosh, the property taxes are horrible, property taxes are out of control, right? Well, this chart shows what an average property tax bill is in Hamilton County, roughly $300...
For a $100,000 home?
For a $100,000 home, $398. Compare that to your average annual Metropolitan Sewer District bill, 800. It's double.
Double that.
Double. And that bill is going to go up for MSD. We've been holding flat on the property taxes. We've been really doing a great job trying to keep it in check, right? But MSD and what you're paying on your sewer bill pales in comparison to what you're paying on property taxes. You're paying double for your sewers.
I guess the big question everybody would say is, but, but why? Why so much? Why?
So, basically, it comes down to the age of the system. You know, in the EPA's Clean Water Act that was passed by federal government, that says we have to come in and we have to update our system. That's currently, the way we have some of our sewer lines set up is they have combined sewer overflows. And a combined sewer overflow was basically built so that you would have your sewer line coming from your house, you know, all that garbage coming through, your bathrooms and sink, kitchen sinks, all that stuff's going into a sewage line. And then you have storm sewers that are on your streets, so when it rains really hard, that collects all the stormwater. When a combined sewer overflow, it's basically where all that sewage is coming from your house, sanitary sewage, combining with that rainwater. And so the stormwater runs, and they mix in together. So what happens with all these great rains we get blessed with at times throughout the season?
And we've had quite a few, yeah.
That you'll have backups in people's basement, you'll have backups on streets and backyards of sewage, raw sewage, lying around, that is...
Which we all know what it's going to look like and it's going to smell like.
And it's bad, it's bad. It is a health risk. And so the Environmental Protection Agency came in and said, you've got to fix this. You can't have all these stormwater lines going in and dumping into your sanitary sewer lines. And therefore, you have to separate them. You have to come up with other ways to divert stormwater, and that's going to cost. And the consent decree, which we went into with the federal government back in 2005, 2006, was going to, they put a price tag of $3.2 billion on it. And because of that, because of that program and all the projects that we have to do per this federal consent decree, illegal, you know, consent, illegal settlement, that we told the EPA we're going to go do this.
We have to do this, right.
We're going to fix this, that is driving up our rates.
And it's not as if you wouldn't have fixed it to begin with. That, I think that's one thing that I want to make sure everybody understands, just because a federal agency came up and said, you must fix this. It isn't as if you weren't ever going to go, well, we'll make it go away. No, you were going to, you were going to have to fix it. But now it's kind of like, no, you will, and we're going to hold you to it.
Right, absolutely. And that's what's really, you know, from a percentage on how you say about the rates going up so much.
Right.
That's what's driving it significantly. And when you look at the MSD budget in itself, you know, the money coming in to pay for it isn't coming from an income tax, it isn't coming from a sales tax, it's not coming from a property tax, it's just coming from the rates that the user is paying in their water and sewer bill.
And where does that rate, where does that get calculated? Who calculates that rate?
So the Metropolitan Sewer District will come up and say, well, here's our budget, right? And here's how much we need to spend this year, and here's how many users we have on the system. And we'll do the math and divide out and say, well, then everybody needs to see this much increase. And in fact, there's another, another chart in here where we show the projections
Yes.
of the rate increases for going into, looks like, 2027.
20, yeah.
And if you look at it from today, which we showed on the last slide, you know, 800 annually is about $200 and some dollars quarterly.
Correct.
That's going to go up to almost $687 quarterly. So that's a three times, that's a triple.
Triple.
In the next fifth, 12, 12 years?
That's about 12 years.
We're looking at potentially of rates going up three times of what it is today. So that $800, you know, big, big circle, that's going to be $2,400 a year.
And that's not even putting into a calculation of what may happen to the small circle on the other side.
Right, exactly. Well, the hope is the small circle stays the same or shrinks, which we're trying to do with our property taxes.
Correct.
But from a standpoint on a family budget, on a business, you know, this, this rate increases that we're seeing on MSD is crushing.
And the only reason why I say that is, let's, let's be honest, we can't, we don't have that crystal ball to stare into. We would love to be able to say that everything's going to be fine and we're going to see the decreases and everything. But we don't know what the future is going to hold.
We don't.
So to be able to say, we can try to maintain it, is probably the best safe answer we can give at this time.
Right, absolutely. And so what we're trying to do also, besides just kind of maintaining what we have on a property tax side, but on the MSD side, is try to come up with new ways to say, how can we reduce costs? How can we take costs out of the system so that we don't have to increase the rates that much?
Right.
I mean, just over the past four years, you know, our rate increases have been about eight to six to five percent. So we've been really trying to dial them back. I mean, we've had, over the past 30 years, it's 7.5% average. Over the last 12 years, that's gone up to almost 9%. Over the last four years, it's probably roughly more in that 7%, which is, which is good, it helps. But as you look at the mountain of debt, which, you know, is my favorite chart.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is, we've seen this one before, but it is scary.
This is the mountain of debt, right? So we're currently, like you said, doing $100 million a year to pay for debt.
Pay that off, yes.
It's going to go up to almost 400. It's like 390 right now. $390 million a year we will be paying, at the most, so as we go up the mountain.
Right.
That's the top. And then, you know, will decrease as we go, go down, as years progress and we get the projects completed and paid off. But that $390 million of debt is going to relate to a $800 annual MSD bill going up to a $2,400 MSD bill, to pay that off, if we can't find ways to lower this debt
Right.
by decreasing the cost of the projects and make sure that, you know, we still do what the consent decree wants, the EPA wants us to do. But can we do it in a more efficient and lower-cost manner that saves the ratepayers of Hamilton County?
And as you said earlier, at the beginning of this, it's like, we want to have people still remain in Hamilton County. But with that type of bill being looked at when you're speaking to your realtor, it'll be like, okay, what type of school, what's my property tax? Oh, and that's the bill?
Absolutely.
Here comes Butler County, here comes Warren County, and becomes...
Northern Kentucky, southeastern Indiana.
Yeah, exactly.
And it really came apparent recently, about a month or so ago, was when all the craft breweries came in, because MSD went in and started giving them a surcharge for all their waste product that they do for making beer, right?
And they're going to need, they're going to need a lot of water and a lot to clean it up.
Right, absolutely.
Very true.
And so MSD was looking at charging them more for that. And all of a sudden, they already looked at their MSD bill, and he said, now you're going to add this on top of this surcharge? I'm going to go pull up my business from Hamilton County, Cincinnati, and look somewhere else. Because it's going to be cheaper for me to do business in Butler County, or Claremont County, or Warren County. So, and that's such a thriving industry.
Oh, yes.
You know, for us, it's, you know, to me, it's something that's been, I think, pushing the revitalization of Over the Rhine
I think you're right.
and other parts of the county, that, you know, these microbreweries coming, craft brewers coming in. We don't want to push them out, you know, we don't want them to go someplace else, we want them to stay here.
And also, the last thing we want to see is people leaving, at all.
Absolutely.
Especially when it's a new business coming in with an open door, going, come on in, and then they try to step their foot in and then they're walking back out.
Right, absolutely. I mean, Rhine guys picked us for a reason. And the last thing we need to do is to go and make it burdensome for them to do business here, and they want to go move someplace else.
Which is something that we've talked about in the past, of how there are so many pieces of red tape that we're trying to alleviate to make people come in.
Right, absolutely.
Why add one more obstacle?
Right. And to me, this is the largest obstacle.
Sure.
It is literally the 10,000-pound gorilla that's going to really just crush us if we don't get a handle on it and how we, you know, address just the operations and governance of the system, as well as the effect on the ratepayer in Hamilton County.
And not just as a family, especially with that, but if you're looking at businesses, especially like that, like I said, that is an industry that utilizes so much water, both in purity as well as in waste
Right.
that that would be the frightening nail in the coffin.
Right. And so we have worked with them. So we are trying to come up to make sure that they understand that we don't want them to leave, we want them to stay, we want their business to grow, you know, we want to make sure that they're very successful. So we are trying to come up with, you know, a fair way to establish, you know, what their needs are from the Metropolitan Sewer District billings. And so that is, that is happening, and we're getting their inputs. And that's another thing, too. And I encourage your viewers to contact us on other issues or ideas on how to handle, you know, some of the issues we're facing with regards to sewer district, because we don't have all the answers.
Sure.
And a lot of times, we just rely on, well, this is how we always did it. And therefore, oh, we'll just tack on a fee here, we're going to add a surcharge there. And the next thing you know, family's going to say, I don't want, I don't want to pay this anymore. I'd rather go live somewhere else, or, you know, a small business saying, I can't afford to operate here anymore. So, working with the brewers has been a good, you know, a good thing. And, you know, we encourage that to happen across all businesses and industries. It's not just the beer brewers, but, you know, we want to make sure...
It's a fun one to talk about.
It is, it is. It is a fun one, and it's an important one, you know, for our local economy. I think they've been a shot in the arm and really brought a lot of interest into downtown and into Hamilton County that I don't want to lose that.
No.
You know, it's too important.
It's bringing back history, which is a good way to look at it.
Oh, it's really neat, yeah.
Going back to what you had just started mentioning, that you had, were asking for people's input. Have you gone to people and kind of elicited more information? Or are you kind of asking, like we are today, if you've got pieces of information that you want to bring to us, come to us?
Both, both.
Both, please, Ray.
Yeah, we've been, yeah, we've been reaching out to folks, we've been trying to do from, from different levels. One of, how do we handle the Environmental Protection Agency's consent decree? How are we doing our governance structure, which we'll go into here in a few minutes, about, you know, how should we operate the sewer system going forward after the 2018?
Well, that's the best place to start, especially since it's going to be almost fresh slate, considering it's a brand-new year, once that starts.
Right, right. Of how we're going to operate it, how we're going to govern it.
Right.
We've already started that. We've done some listening sessions with local officials. We met with the Greater Cincinnati Municipal League, and we met also with the First Ring Suburbs Consortium, kind of went through this presentation with them, giving them information and background of what, you know, the Metropolitan Sewer District is all about, the history, what's, you know, what the rates are looking at, what the consent decree, explaining that, and then explaining the 1968 agreement, and soliciting their support and help of, well, what do you want of your system? Because, you know, your constituents, you know, your citizens are part of this, they pay these rates, you know, what do they want and how they want to govern the Metropolitan Sewer District going forward after the 1968 agreement expires in 2018.
Which, again, isn't too far away. So, looking at the decree, we've got our next slide here about, is, you know, you entered into this in 2004 and decided to go over a two-phase...
Yeah, we were the only one in the nation that actually got the EPA to agree to give us two phases.
What, why is it normally one, and how did we get so lucky to do two?
Well, we had some good lawyers, which is always important, right?
All right.
You know, it's always good to have good lawyers on your side who are out there working with the EPA and, you know, the federal courts, because it went into the federal court system.
Yeah.
And that's where we did this consent decree as a kind of a settlement to get out of the suit from the federal and state EPA. And so we, we basically got agreement to say, okay, you're going to have two phases. Your first phase is going to last till 2018, which seems to be the magical year.
Magical year.
And then the second phase has no end date, which is good to a stance of, well, we've got time to fix things, but it's also bad is that there's no end date.
And a lot of people...
Can we ever end this?
Correct. And a lot of people work better with a strict timeline as well. So to be able to put the strength, you know, tighten the screws a little bit and say, ooh, you've got two more years to get that done, you've got three more years. This seems very open-ended.
It does, which helps us to a point of, with the rates
Right.
of, if you do put us a hard deadline of, let's say, 10, 15 years, and you want us to do $2 billion worth of project, our rates will go through the roof
Yeah.
immediately, right, to pay for it. So having no end date kind of can peanut butter that across several years. But then the problem is, you're constantly trying to fix this problem, and will you ever get it, complete it? You know, to me, you kind of want some end date to focus on, but at the same time, you want some leeway on what is going to be impacting your citizens.
Do you feel that it's more like a Band-Aid than a permanent solution?
No, I think we're definitely finding permanent solutions through this.
Okay.
And we're seeing that within, you know, our first phase. And there's specific projects within this consent decree of saying, you will fix X and you will fix Y throughout our systems within the county.
And that seems, and seems logical. I'm sure there were a lot that they looked at and said, oh, this is, I absolutely, Phase One, this needs to be accomplished before you even think of going anywhere else.
Right. And if we don't get them done, we'll get penalized. So we'll get fines and penalties if we don't get them done in a certain timings, specifically the Phase 1 stuff. But so far, we are on track.
Okay, that's where I was going next.
We're on track. We're trying. But there's some concerns on some of the projects and cost overruns. And again, that kind of boils back down into our relationship with the county and the city. So the city is the one that's in charge of getting these projects completed on time, under budget. And there seems to be issues that we're finding down the road. Because as county commissioners, we're the ones approving budgets. We're the ones approving rate increases. And all of a sudden, they say, well, this project's gonna cost X million. And then the next thing we know, it's 2X million. So we are starting to get more and more involved with how those projects are being, you know, budgeted out. Because the ratepayers, the ones that are gonna pay for that.
Right.
So if somebody's not watching over how, you know, the city's operating the system, we got a chance of, all of a sudden, you're gonna see 2X, 3X of cost. But then that mountain grows even more, because you gotta borrow more money to pay for the projects that were gonna cost $10 million, but now they're costing $40 million.
Right.
And so that's, that's where we're kinda really butting heads, so to speak, with the city on operating all that. And it's, it's not a bad thing. I mean, it's a good thing, we feel, standpoint of, at the end of the day, the ratepayer's the one that we need to protect.
Right.
And, you know, the city, you're just as responsible as we are to make sure that the ratepayers are getting that protection and not going off and having budgets and doing things that are doubling or tripling the cost on these projects that then the ratepayer has to pick up.
You had, a comment that kinda perked my ear there is that you're starting to watch over the, the projects a little bit more. I would assume you've had your pulse on all of these projects ever since.
We have, since the consent decree came into place. In fact, we brought in a monitor specifically to go and monitor our progress on them. Because, one, we wanna make sure that we're getting them done on time.
Right.
And that we weren't gonna get penalized or have any fines if we don't get them done correctly.
Because that affects you, and again, pay rate again.
Right, absolutely. The ratepayer, right. And then, and two, of just looking at the budget aspect of it, of saying, well, you know, Metropolitan Sewer District's coming in saying it's gonna cost, you know, 100 million, but now it's really gonna cost 120 million. So having our, our folks kinda looking through the budgeting and making sure, well, what is that money going for? And is that, you know, kind of value engineering it to make sure that we're actually paying what we need to. Making our, you know, get the most bang out of our buck.
Right.
Right? Because we don't wanna go get more from the ratepayer. Let's make sure we're spending as cost-effectively as possible. And so that's where we've been really trying to track these projects, you know, with the city. You know, at times, you know, it's, it's been difficult, especially probably over the last four years or so. So if you look at our, you know, 50-year agreement, probably the first 40 years, 40 years, no problems, right? Kinda getting along, doing everything correctly. And I think, once the consent decree kinda hit in, and the amounts of money, and the large projects that we're working on, that's when kinda we've started taking more of active participation.
Sure.
That has probably started, you know, kind of with the city, saying, well, wait a minute, we've been handling this for 40 years. Now, all of a sudden, you're kinda coming in here. And it's like, well, yes, this is a $3.2 billion project that is the largest public works project ever in Hamilton County. I mean, it's the equivalent of eight Paul Brown stadiums.
See.
I mean, it's, it's incredible. I mean, that's, it's 16 great American ballparks, 16 streetcars. I mean, to us, we need to make sure that we're watching every time. It kinda harkens back to the Big Dig up in Boston, right? There was that big...
Yes.
...transportation project they had up there, a big road project, putting tunnels in throughout Boston. And it was billions of dollars that were being wasted. And that, we, you know, we don't want that to happen here. So we don't want a Big Dig problem in Hamilton County with the sewer system. And so that's where we're trying to make sure that we're working the right projects, cost-effectively, and making sure the city does the same. And that's where we've kinda been, you know, rubbing, rubbing elbows a bit here, saying, well, wait a minute, you know, your job is just to do the budget and set the rates. Our job is to operate the system. And it's like, true, but that's gonna end in a couple of years. And we need to make sure that, you know, before that ends, that you're doing the best job of running the system in the most cost-effective way.
So we were talking about projects. I think that's where we're kinda leading before we get into other things. You had a number of projects going on currently for Phase 1.
Right, right.
And obviously, you're projecting into this new Phase 2.
Yep.
Where, where are we on both? And where, what can we see the future bringing?
So there's 467 projects total in both Phase 1 and Phase 2. So far, Phase 1, and these are all on $2,006.
Okay.
That's another thing. And you gotta kinda look at 2015 versus 2006. There's a little multiplier on it.
Correct.
So that $3.2 billion is probably more closely to $4 billion in today's $2,015. So, but we are supposed to spend $1.1 billion of that $3.2 in Phase 1. And so we're currently at about 8, 750 million.
Okay.
So we've spent 750 million year-to-date. And a lot of these are smaller projects, probably doing low-hanging fruit first, trying to get things done quickly. So they've been on time and, you know, trying to stay on budget. But that's been some of our biggest concerns are, some of these larger projects that are coming in are starting to see cost overruns.
Well, and that's what I would, I would be afraid of, is that it's great to get projects done, people seeing the progress going on, like I said, taking that low-hanging fruit, getting it done going forward. But I'm hoping that it's also preparing and not necessarily pushing back those larger projects that are gonna be the...
No, it's not, right. And if you look at some of the budget, some of the big dollars are going into the planning and engineering and design of those larger projects before we even break ground on them.
And I think that's one of the, I'm glad you said something like that, because I don't believe people see that side of it. When they think of a project, they think of the groundwork, people hands-on, hands-in-dirt.
Yep.
Moving forward. That's the project to them. There's planning, there's, there's engineering, there's all of these things prior to that, that again, are gonna cost money. Because obviously, you have to hire a firm to do it. It's not just...
Right. Well, when you start digging up the earth and you start moving stuff around, you wanna make sure that you're doing it in a way that's engineering-wise correct, so you're not impacting somebody else's house, you know, or impacting, putting in a line that breaks later on that you have to fix. So, yeah, there's a lot of planning and engineering work that's done ahead of time that makes sure that you're doing the right project. And so, and that's, again, where we're, as a county, kinda looking in and saying, you know, are you doing all those things correctly? Are you value engineering it right so that you're not going in and redoing it twice?
Right.
And a lot of times, too, with these projects, a lot of folks don't see them, because they are underground.
Sure.
You know, so they're, they kinda see the road, you know, torn up for a while and kinda inconvenience. But then, when it's done, you don't really see a nice, big, tall building afterwards, because it's all hidden. It's all under the ground.
But it's not coming up out of your backyard either.
And that's, yes, that's definitely the key thing. I know there's definitely communities that we are working with them on those issues of making sure that they don't have, you know, sewage in their backyards or in their basements. And we have a program out from the consent decree, actually, that if there is a sewer backup in your basement, MSD will come in and clean it up. And they will take care of the cost of cleaning up that sewage backup, if you find, if you're connected to our systems. And that's the cause of it.
And I know that there was a larger discussion about that a few years ago, when a number of people, Colrain Township was a bigger one hit. Are we still seeing a lot of that? Or have we kind of...
There's still. I mean, there are still instances of it. I mean, the system is not fixed. And, you know, what we're trying to do over the next, you know, 20-plus years is to fix it. So, yes, you are still seeing that occurring through, through the county, which is unfortunate. And we're trying to get fixes out there as soon as we can. But it's just gonna take us some time.
Well, once we get to, through Phase 1, which, again, 2018, that magic year.
Yep, yep.
Phase 2 goes into implementation.
Right.
What, what is Phase 2 going to bring us?
So, you know, Phase 2 is bringing some final permanent fixes on some of the items we're addressing. So as I said, we kinda did some of the low-hanging fruit. Well, some of the Phase 2 work's gonna be fixing the bigger, bigger issues and getting permanent fixes on them. But at the same time, there's still small projects that we'll be working on throughout that. We are planning right now for Phase 2, so it's not, again, like, we're not gonna touch it until 2018. We gotta be prepared.
First of April comes, you're just starting to draft things? No, not at all.
Right, no, no. We're definitely already starting to look at those project lists, making sure that we know which projects would be the best benefit. I mean, because when you're kinda looking at the system, you wanna make sure, again, that the project I'm working in this community doesn't affect the community downstream or, or down, you know, the way, the street. You wanna make sure that the system effects make sense on how you're, how you're fixing it, so that you're not causing a problem somewhere else. So, you know, there's, there's kinda strategy in how we're doing that, in developing those plans, and making sure that the right plans are being developed, and not, oh, we tried Plan A, then we're, whenever we're gonna apply, do Plan B, and then Plan C. It's, that's a waste of money.
Right.
And a waste of time. And we wanna fix the problem right the first time at the least cost.
You, since Phase 2 has the indefinite end date, since the, most of them are the larger projects at this point, do you think that's why there was no end cap date? Because of the unforeseen problems or unforeseen cost incursions that may occur in this next phase?
Probably. I, again, I wasn't around when they did the consent decree and the logic of why they broke it into two phases. I wasn't privy to. I just, I'm happy that they did. From a standpoint, it's, it's very beneficial, I think, for our community to be able to handle these bigger projects. I think Phase 1, they had some trial projects put in to see about, you know, kinda temporary, see if it's, it's a, you know, partial remedy, would it work? And if it does, then, well, then we'll advance it to the final, you know, solution. But, you know, from a standpoint of, of making sure all the projects are done on time, it's, it's nice that we do have more of open-ended data in Phase 2, so that we can get it right and not crush the ratepayer by having to get it done in five years and, you know, jack up the rates five times, when we got, you know, many, many more years that we can spread it across, that will help get the project done, but at the same time, protect the ratepayer.
And, and the key word being their protection and rush.
Right, right.
You know, again, I think we've seen far too many instances, and I'm not saying sewer, but I'm saying in general, across the country, that people unfortunately get caught in a circumstance where they need to get a project done quickly. And it wasn't the best thing because it needed to be rushed.
Right.
And we're back two, three, four times.
Yeah. No, absolutely.
Fixing something.
Right. And that's the last thing we need to do here with some of these projects, that they're so massive and, and impact on people's lives. I mean, when you got sewage, raw sewage floating in your backyard or basement, that's not a good thing.
Sure.
And so to say, we fixed the problem, but then, two years later, it's not, that's not a good thing.
I know this is sometimes a tender subject, but did the streetcar impact any of this?
Well, that was one thing, no, honestly, that, no, that was, honestly, that was one thing that we actually looked at was, that when I came onto the county, that we were gonna make sure that not one dime of ratepayer money was gonna go to helping the streetcar. I was, again, it was a city decision to go build this streetcar.
Right.
And it was not, county ratepayer shouldn't be put on, you know, the bill to pick up of how much it was gonna cost to fix any sewage issues down in the city. And, and so we said, we cannot have any, you know, if, if we're gonna fix it anyway for, you know, just, it was on our list.
Right.
And we're gonna do the project, we'll do that. But we were not gonna do something special and move, you know, like, I guess with Duke Utilities, right? We're not gonna move a sewer line for the streetcar. And so that's, that's, we made sure that did not happen.
As long as none of the cables got cut. We, we unfortunately got, got caught. There was a small line that did get cut.
Oh, really?
So we apologize for any service that was not missed, for the, it wasn't our fault. But looking ahead, obviously, 2018 is that, that end cap date. Where, obviously, you are already starting to speak. That's why you're here today.
Right, absolutely.
And everything. Where does the future bring us when 2018 comes and we look at MSD differently?
Well, and that's why we're going out and having these listening sessions. And I appreciate, Jason, you having me on tonight.
Not a problem.
To kinda talk to the, to the public on MSD and, and what it's all about, and the impact of, financial impact on their lives, and then where we're gonna go in the future. So currently, we have two arms that run MSD. The governance is done by the county. The operations is done by the city. And we, I, you know, I feel, and I believe my fellow commissioners agree, that that's not a model that's gonna be sustainable going into the future. Now, we need to have a, a single governance model that is both governance and operating. And so we're, you know, in fact, just this past week, we passed a resolution to enter into mediation with the city.
Okay.
To sit down with them and say, well, how are we going to go transition from what we currently have to what we should have after April of 2018? So we've kind of started, made the first offering to go out there and sit down and say, let's kinda work this out. Let's bring in a mediator to say, you know, what are our concerns on your side? Here's the concerns on our side. I mean, one of ours significantly is the cost overruns. You know, we've seen these cost overruns occur over the last several years. When you're talking billions of dollars, you know, any percentage of cost overruns is millions of dollars that we don't have, that we're going back to the ratepayer to increase the rates to pay for.
Right.
So we need to make sure that whoever's operating the system is operating in the most cost-effective manner possible. And currently, right now, we have that concerns with the city, that that's not happening. So we're gonna start working, sitting down with them, also going out to our, our local jurisdictions in Hamilton County to get their input on what do they think the governance and operating structure should be going forward. And, you know, I don't have the answer right now of what it is. But we got at least a year, a year and a half to figure this out and work on it. And that's where we wanna solicit input from citizens to say, you know, we can, we can either keep it the way it is right now, keep going, or we can change it to something different. And to me, I think we need to change it to something different. And that's where we're trying to solicit input from citizens to say, well, what is that? You know, what do you think that should be? Should the county run it by itself? Should there be another third party running? What are ideas that, that can happen? But to me, the status quo cannot, cannot continue to go on as it is, because it's just not working.
Obviously, you've probably done your research and have looked throughout the state, as well as outside of the state, to other states. Is our situation unique to our, our county? Or are we similar in many different ways?
I've been told, this is the only structure like this for any sewer district in America. So we are the only ones that have this type of system set up.
So no one else is going through these projects?
Where we have two, two government bodies operating the sewer system. So just that alone tells me, I don't think we got the best way of running this.
Right.
That when the rest of America doesn't have this model, I don't think it's the right way to do it. And so, and especially if you look at, you know, just, we talked earlier about the population trends, right? I mean, when the populate, when we went into this agreement back in 1968, you know, the population, majority of it was in the city of Cincinnati. You know, now, it's in a county. And so when you have a operating body, an operating, you know, jurisdiction of the city that's running it, viewing it from their lenses of the city, is that the right person that should be operating it, when actually the population is more in the county?
Right.
And it should be more of a county view, instead of just, well, this is what's best for the city. This is how we view it. We operate it. And they're kinda looking at it through the lens of, you know, their city jurisdiction.
Right.
Versus, hey, there's a whole county now, and we are now 2/3 of the population compared to 1/3 from the city, reversed of what it was back in 1968. So, so just that by itself, of just looking at, you know, the operator should be probably more associated with the majority of the ratepayers than a minority.
Because it could quite possibly even, looking at bringing from each different part, north, south, east, west, bringing kind of a consortium together is, might be a way to look at that as well.
Right. That was one idea was to brought up, bring up is creating a separate sewer district by itself that would have a board, that would have representatives from the different areas. That's something that's being, you know, kinda thrown out there as an idea. Again, we would have to work with our state legislature in creating any type of legislation that we might need if we have to do something different. But, again, we're open to any ideas about how we can, you know, operate the system in the most effective, cost-effective manner that still delivers the service to the ratepayer, but protects them from the amount of rates that they're gonna be paying if we don't come up with a better way of, of running this.
Do you find that more people are willing to speak about this as, as they hear about it?
Oh, absolutely. I think, once they get this information, I mean, I think, once people understand, you know, just the, the enormous problem that we're facing, I think they get more interested.
Sure.
Especially when you show the chart of the county property tax bill versus your sewer bill, and then the rate chart of, that's going to triple, that's gonna get people's attention.
Sure.
I mean, when you go from paying $800 a year to $2,400 a year, I mean, people are gonna say, wow, we wanna make sure we can keep those, you know, rates and costs as low as possible. What's the best system that we need to operate this and govern it that will protect the ratepayers? I, I definitely think, as people start hearing this information, they're gonna get much more interested and much more involved. more interested and much more involved.
What's the best way for a average citizen from the county to come and speak about this? You know, obviously, you're saying you're looking for the input, what's the best way?
So, there's several ways they can. Right now, like I mentioned, we had our first listening session with the Greater Cincinnati Municipality League and the First Ring Suburbs Consortium. We're going to have a couple more of those in November and December, the end of the year, probably beginning of next year. So, they can contact our offices down at the county-
Okay.
-to find out when they're going to be and where. We also are going to have the budget process for MSD. So, just as we're going now through the county general fund budget-
Right.
-and capital budget, we will also have an MSD operating and capital budget that we have to pass, and we will have an MSD hearing on that budget. So, that's another opportunity for citizens to come in. That will be later in the year, probably late November, maybe December timeframe. We haven't set the date yet, but they can contact our offices at the county administration building to get that information of when they will be. Because again, it'll be great to hear from folks of saying, you know, about their ideas on how to fix the system or, you know, how to operate it.
And I'm glad that you brought that up, because where I was going, as well as the tax budget hearings are coming up, and we will be helping televise those here shortly.
Yeah, our first one's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, October 21st.
As a matter of fact, in Colrain Township.
Yep.
So, you can see it here on our channels, so you can watch that. But I just wanted to make sure that people didn't get the idea that those are the places they needed to come and they-
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. They can email us down at the county anytime, they can call us. I mean, we're open to, you know, just listening to folks, and we do, we do get calls, we get folks. I mean, we were helping out, you know, folks, trying to help out the folks of Colrain, Wyoming, you know, various communities throughout Hamlin County of their sewer issues and making sure that, you know, we're trying to, you know, fix their problems that they're seeing as well as getting their input of new ideas of possibly running the system or just projects that would help, you know, alleviate that mountain to reduce the amount of debt that we'll have to take out for the projects that we have to pay for right now.
And I will assume, similar to the tax budget hearings, they will be mobile as well, or will they be downtown?
I believe the MSD one will, usually is downtown, but we might look at making it mobile this year, so that more folks can attend it, but we haven't set that date in place yet.
I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, no, I just-
I just want to make sure that-
And actually, yeah, when I was president, I'm vice president of the board now, so when I was president, I could have a little bit more, you know, saying that, but President Greg Hartman's the one that helps set those dates and times, so you can work with his office as well.
Not a problem. I will keep that posted. But, you know, we've talked a lot about sewer today, but it's important to get that information out there. Again, as you said, looking forward is the only way to make us get to where we need to be.